Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sanson and Jim Jonas with another episode of Veterans in Politics. Today, we have Jenna Waltho. She's a candidate for Clark County Commission District F. We haven't interviewed any county commission for a long time.
Yeah, no, it has been quite a while.
Who's the last county commission? Was it Steve Sisalat?
Yeah.
Who was the last county commission or candidate we interviewed?
It might have been Sisalat. I can't know.
Or was it Tom Collins? He's the only Democrat that has balls enough to run against him in the primary.
Well, we interviewed Tom Collins and then we interviewed Chris.
June Kiliani.
Yeah, but I think when we interviewed Chris, she was running for mayor.
Ah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, but she was.
And Larry Brown? Larry Brown?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Lawrence Wiegley?
Like, yeah, I wasn't there for Lawrence Wiegley. But I know him well because he was my county commissioner.
So, Mr. Jonas, do you have any rants today?
No, actually, I don't have any rants.
Since last night?
Yeah. No, actually, I don't have any rants. I'm excited for this show because, like you said, we haven't interviewed somebody for Clark County Commissioner in a while, and it's interesting because, like you said last night, right? There's 25 people running for governor, and arguably, I would say that county commissioners probably yield more power in this state than the governor does, actually.
They do.
Yeah.
Especially if all seven of them get together.
Yeah, it's a very important seat to hold, and people don't realize what the budget that they oversee and what exactly it all entails. So, this should be a good interview.
Well, before we get to our guest, I have a couple of public announcement. Number one, we have a meet and greet for former Senator Dean Heller tomorrow and a gubernatorial candidate for governor. And then on Friday, we have the Boldest City in Henderson Municipal Endorsement Interviews right here in studio. And then on Saturday, April 5th, who's that? April 2nd, we have the Secretary of State, Attorney General, Lieutenant Governor, Governor, and the US Senate race at Ahearn. And then Sunday, we have municipal interviews for North Las Vegas right here in studio. And then Monday, we have interviews for Las Vegas Municipal right here in studio. And then I forget what's after that.
Yeah, the list goes on and on.
The list goes on. But we got 14 days of endorsed interviews to endorse candidates, 14 days. And then we gotta go up to Reno on the 22nd of April to do the Northern Nevada, just to let you know because I just found out today from Paul Jackson.
Did you? Okay.
Yeah, to cover the entire state of Nevada. So, we're gonna get to know all these candidates. We're not like those other organizations that just pick and choose. We invite everybody, and then it's up to them if they want to show up or not.
And unlike these other organizations, you're not giving, we don't send out letters, and you have to fill it out first.
And we know that campaign managers fill out all those questionnaires now, don't we?
Well, yes.
It's not the candidate.
So, we get an opportunity to, and that's like the screening process, right? We don't do that. We don't prescreen anybody. You don't know what you're gonna be asked.
We don't even know what the questions are.
Yeah, well, half the time, we don't. I mean, like, do you have a script in front of you?
I don't even know what questions I'm gonna ask this candidate.
And what that does is it educates the public, and that's what we're all about.
And candidates are supposed to, and electors are supposed to, think on their feet. Now, let me do a little research and come back to you. They're supposed to at least have some type of idea of what's going on.
And what's something you and I agreed on years and years ago?
What was it?
Well, we're aging ourselves now. But if you can't handle our questions, then what are you gonna do once you get elected?
Yeah, when the pressure's really on, when they protesting outside your house, ask those school board trustees what happened to them. All right, well, I think we done, do the segue. So, Ms. Waltho, hi, how you doing?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Good. Could you give us a bio?
Yeah, bio, let's see here. I've lived in Las Vegas for 15 years. I'm from Kansas originally.
Ooh, Dorothy.
Yeah, I left my dog Toto at home, too.
Oh, really? Oh, you got jokes, too? Fire right back.
So, born and raised in Kansas, went to college there. When I finished college, I knew I wanted to come out here and work in casino marketing. So, where do you go when you want to work in casino marketing? Las Vegas, right? So, I came out here, started in casino marketing, was doing really well. 2008 happened. We all got laid off, right?
Yeah, they said real estate never goes down. They lied.
Yes. And you know, our whole department, I was in VIP services at the time, whole department got laid off. So, laid off, 22 years old at the time. So, I went back to my degree, which is in apparel marketing and management. So, I've been working in that field ever since then.
So, you're a baby, huh?
Baby? You know, not quite a baby, but... So, when I was doing that, I really wanted to get involved in the community. So, I started out, where else? HOA, right? Everybody's got, most everybody, right?
I used to be an HOA president.
Okay, so, yeah, exactly. That's how you kind of start.
One of the most hated organizations out there.
Right? And so, I didn't like how they were, what they were doing with the community. So, you can't just sit around and complain. You gotta get involved.
Hundred dollars if you have a weed sticking out of a rock.
Fifty dollars if you don't put your trash can back.
Two hundred dollars if you leave your garage door open overnight.
Okay, and if you want to paint your house a different color, you gotta get approval, right?
You need to go slip them a few coins under the table.
Exactly. So, I got involved with HOA. I got elected in as treasurer, and then I got elected in as president.
Oh, boy.
So, started that, kind of learned a little bit.
Are you still president of the HOA?
So, I'm no longer in it, in HOA. Yeah, but then subsequently, during that time, I was also, I'm still a member of Junior League of Las Vegas. So, it's an organization of women who volunteer. So, one of the ladies had posted on Facebook that there is this classes called Clark County College, and it's for normal citizens to go down, take a six, eight week course, you know, one night out of the week. So, I signed up to do it, and that's where I learned a lot about the county. You learn about almost all the departments. People come in and talk to you from different agencies. And I loved it. I love learning about the community, kind of learning how I can continue my involvement. So, that's where I learned about town boards and land use and zoning, okay? So, then I said, I gotta get in on one of these boards because where I live in the southwest part of Vegas, there is a lot of growth, a lot of development happening, right? So, I applied to be on the Enterprise Town Advisory Board. So, I got appointed to that for two years, applied again, and got appointed, and then I was the chairwoman of Enterprise Town Advisory Board.
Could you give us the boundary lines for District F?
So, District F, yeah, so it's southwest part of the valley. So, it is south of Charleston. There's a little jagged edges because of the redistricting. Typically, the west side of the I-15, all the way down, there is some cutouts by the stadium for District A. With the redistricting, we now cross over I-15 to the east of South Sun City Anthem and Inspirada.
So, you're up in part of Henderson as well?
Just that little bit. Yeah, that just happened last November with the redistricting. But I have Good Springs, the Town of Blue Diamond, part of Prim.
Oh, you got Prim?
Only on the west side of the I-15.
Folks, we're back. This is Steve Sanson and Jim Jonas, Veterans in Politics. We had some little technical difficulty, and we're gonna continue where we left off with Jenna Waltho, who's a candidate for Clark County, Clark County Commission District Number F. Ms. Waltho, please continue.
Yes, of course. So, I did that on Enterprise, which was amazing.
And the question was?
My bio, kind of my background, yeah, how we got here. So, I spent four years on Enterprise Town Advisory Board, and that's where I learned the neighbors. I learned everything, a lot about land use and zoning. And then the next time was to put in my application again. I didn't hear anything. Next thing, I for sure thought I was getting fired from a volunteer position.
It happens. I've seen it a lot.
It absolutely happens, especially if you're pretty vocal about kind of like, hey, what's going on? You know, we're listening to the neighbors, and some of these applications are still kind of going through. So, yeah, absolutely. So, next thing I know, I, you know, was asked to be, if I wanted to be appointed to the Planning Commission by one of the current Planning Commissioners, Commissioner Michael Naft. So, he knows that I do a great job with land use and zoning. That knew I was gonna be the perfect person.
Naft appointed you?
That's correct.
I thought you had to appoint within your district.
So, for the Planning Commission, you don't have to live in the district that you represent.
Really?
Unlike the county commission, you have to live in your district, right? So, I live in District F.
Okay. So, what do you, what do you want to run for this position?
Yeah, one of my, that, this is a great question, and I think that for me, it was, and continues to be, the hours that I sit through public comment, and I hear what is happening, especially obviously with land use and zoning being a planning commissioner. And then I see nothing is being done to change and kind of change the direction of where our district is going with regards to land use and zoning. And these applications are getting passed, and the neighbors feel frustrated. And I feel like as an appointed position, my, some of my voting and some of my motions are advisory still. I don't have that final, that final vote or that final motion on some of the items, like a non-conforming zone change. So, for me, it's, I'm tired of trying to give this false hope to neighbors. I want to be the final vote and the final action to really continue to listen to what's going on in the neighborhood.
You know, county commission is actually what got me involved in politics. I went after this young lady named Erin Kenny, who decided that she was gonna put a fire station at the end of my culter sack. Now, before I bought my home, which at the time in 1995 was $169,000 for a four-bedroom, three and a half baths, backyard, you can't get that now. I looked at the master plan, right, and I looked at these empty lots, and I said, hey, hey, what's going on with this dirt lot over here? Oh, that's gonna be residential homes. So, I'm like, oh, okay, I'll just buy. And lo and behold, two years later, I'm getting the fire station. So, we end up forming a HOA because we never had one. So, we formed one, and we end up suing the county, all of them. We sued the entire county body back in 1998, I think it was. And lo and behold, we didn't win, and we had to incur our own attorney's fees and costs. They didn't come after us for their attorney's fees and costs because, you know, it's taxpayers' dollars anyways. But they didn't come after us for it. And, but there was a whole lot of restrictions that the fire department had to do. They couldn't put their sirens on until they're about like a mile away. They couldn't put their lights on. They couldn't do all kinds of craziness. So, there was a whole lot of restrictions in there. But here's the thing. Erin Kenny lied to us, her constituents, about, you know, what was supposed to be there. And how are you gonna be as a county commissioner, are you gonna lie to your constituents?
No, I'm not gonna lie. I haven't lied in the last six years, and I think that...
What happened before six years?
Well, that's how long I've been serving. Right before then, I didn't have constituents. I didn't lie to the homeowners either on the HOA. But no, there's no reason for that. And I think that's really 90% of the problem is that people are not upfront about what's happening, right? So, you're absolutely right. A parcel of land can be, a realtor or somebody in the county can say it right now, this is zone for, you know, residential low or, you know, medium residential, right? And you're like, great. But, you know, two months down the road, something changes. Maybe somebody wants to come in, and maybe they want to put commercial, right?
But why should the homeowner suffer?
No, you're absolutely right. But as an elected official, you can't lie to the constituents, and you have to be open about the process and keep the neighbors informed on what's happening in the community. Like, hey, somebody's wanting to buy this land. Let's do a neighborhood meeting. What's your input? Do you want this? Do you not want this? And that's really kind of that breakdown that you see with some, you know, elected officials.
Do you think that a developer that is coming before the county to change zoning from residential to commercial, which is a huge difference, do you think that they should, like, give an incentive to the homeowners that live around there?
Well, incentive, I guess it would depend on...
Monetary incentive?
Well, I think it would depend on...
Or put a pool in their backyard for them, and they'll be happy with that?
Well, if that's something that the developer wants to do. I think in some cases, developers do a really good job of giving some of the neighbors something that they want in return, and they help with the, if it's a great project and the neighborhood is welcoming it, they do help with the infrastructure, right? So, they'll finish sidewalks, they'll put streetlights in if the neighbors want it, right? Some of the rural residents don't want it, but they'll help with the infrastructure, which in turn helps the neighborhood, you know. So, yes, sometimes there is incentives there. Well, I don't know.
So, speaking of Erin Kenny, do you remember the G's thing?
So, that was way before my time, but I have kind of heard a little bit about it.
Well, let me, let me just give you a little rundown. The G's thing was they took out, well, Erin Kenny was the rat, and they went after Lance Malone, American Kate Chauncey, and Dario Herrera. And did I, did I miss one? Erin Kenny, Lance Malone, American Kate Chauncey, Dario Herrera. I don't know if I missed one or not, about this touch ordinance that was supposed to be at the strip clubs when they were gonna have this touch ordinance. And you had to stand like, I believe, 15 or 10 feet away from the person and dance, just like they do in Washington DC, which I don't know how they make money. But anyways, they wanted to bring that same philosophy here, and apparently, one of the strip club owners were paying them off not to do that. How would you hole up in a situation like that?
Well, I think there's different reasons why people take money, whether it's for, to change an ordinance or for campaign contributions. But, I mean, I, for, for taking contributions for your campaign, to me, that's for access. That's not for voting, and that's not for changing or trying to hide an ordinance or try to slip an ordinance through without anybody noticing. So, I think for me, I've been doing this for, as a volunteer, for six years. And I think for me, that's unethical. That's not something I have done, and that's not something I'm about to even go down that road. For me, that's, that's not right.
What would you say to someone like me that said that, that says that all of this is garbage? Like, if, if you own, if you own this land, if you're a property owner, then you should be able to do whatever the hell you want with your land.
Yep, you have property rights.
You know, the whole zoning thing and like, okay, so my next-door neighbor can't have a two-story house, you know, and some of this stuff just gets so far in the weeds. That's why I hate HOAs. So, what do you say to people like that? Because honestly, I think these ordinances are, and Steve and I might disagree on this one, but, you know, like, if they want to put a fire station across the street, well, let them put a fire station across the street.
Right? Yeah, you're absolutely right. People have property.
So, how intrusive can government actually get? Like, I don't think government has the right to tell anybody what to do with the property that they own.
Right. So, you are absolutely right, and there is Title 30 that does follow that. So, if you are the property owner, and this kind of is, if you are, it's your house and you're the property owner, I completely agree. Fortunately, HOAs, which you spoke about, are very powerful here in Nevada, and that's something that's...
But didn't they find HOAs unconstitutional?
So, that I'm not sure about. I just know that they are powerful, and they can actually put a lien on your house.
I'm playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, no, absolutely. No, I'm here for it. I love it. So, as an elected official, and what you're saying is, is to not get to a lawsuit, okay? That's the ultimate goal.
Like the badlands.
Exactly, right? So, that's where that hands-on approach, absolutely, right? Is to work this stuff out before it even gets to that point. Because let me tell you, I don't want a lawsuit. I've never even been a part of a lawsuit. I don't want a lawsuit for my constituents, right? Because who pays for a lawsuit?
Taxpayers.
Exactly. So, we shouldn't even get to that point. We should work it out, bring everybody to the table. And nine times out of 10, I'm gonna tell you, if the neighbors just feel that they've been heard and we can get some of the concerns addressed, that's gonna take care of some of this stuff.
So, let me ask you this question then, because I 100% agree with everything you just said. And Steve and I have been to a lot of meetings. You know how many citizens actually show up to be heard?
Right.
So, if you're elected, like...
Less of the more cops bill.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. I mean, you don't have magic, you will not, when you get elected. You won't have a magic wand, and I get that. And you're not gonna be able to drag every citizen in and be like, hey, you need to hear this stuff.
Yeah.
But if you're, if you're elected, what kind of outreach we have other than, you know, the standard letter that you get, like, okay, there's a proposed, you know, this property wants to switch from this to this. There'll be a public meeting on this date, and one person shows up, maybe two?
Yep.
What kind of community outreach would you be willing to do to get people to actually come to the table?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Let me address the notices first. So, those notices, if it's a non-conforming zone change, has to get sent out, and the legislature decides this, right? 1,500 feet is the notifying. So, imagine we're in the rural, like, the real rural, like, properties, right? That could be nine people, and you're 1,500 feet. When it's more dense, it's more people. Nobody knows what those are. The average person doesn't read them. Most, not, more times than not, they get thrown in the trash. They don't even know what's happening in their community. So, first problem, first solution to that is, put that back on the developers, right? So, there is a clause, right, and I don't want to say a clause, but there is now kind of a rule where if you are coming in as a developer for a non-conforming, non-conforming zone change, you have to conduct a neighborhood meeting. So, put it back on the developer to have the outreach. But ultimately, my responsibility to have this outreach, because if I really want to know what's happening in the neighborhoods, and if these people really want this project, tell me what's gonna make this project more beneficial to the neighborhood. What do you want? What's your wish list? It takes the elected official going out there, you know, talking to the neighbors and outreach and really getting involved. I do that now as a planning commissioner. I call the people that I know, the stakeholders that are very active. Hey, gather your people together. Tell me. Send me an email, or let's meet up for coffee. Tell me what's going on. Do you like this project? Do you not like this project? How could we make this project work, right? Because ultimately, we want to avoid going down that other path that we talked about.
So, should take an eminent domain?
So, that's a problem. So, I will give you an example of where this could potentially, later down the road, there's a water problem. Everybody knows that. There's a water problem. So, there is something kind of coming out now where this kind of affects my rural citizens. They have septic tank sinks, right? So, the Water Authority, they're saying that they're in the top three of water wasters. So, what they want to do is convert everybody on a septic tank to hook up to county sewer.
Stop me right there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay, now you're in Steve's wheelhouse. Go ahead, Steve.
I was at the county commission, and I brought this up to Merlin Kirkpatrick.
You opened the door now.
So, I brought this up to Merlin Kirkpatrick at the podium, and Jim Gibbons, and, you know,
Great.
Ross Miller, you know, the whole crew is there.
The whole gang.
Oh, Justin Jones, and what's the other one? I don't know, I forget. Anyway, so, I, the way I, the way I phrased it, I said, you know, the IRS gives tax incentives if you, you know, have solar on your roof.
Sure.
Okay? And Las Vegas Valley Water gives incentives to change from sod to desert. So, I said, why can't the sewer give incentives to change from septic to sewer? And at the same time, capture all that water, you know? Because right now, it costs anywhere between $18,000 to $35,000 to change from septic to sewer with no incentive. Are you willing to give an incentive?
So, I think that's absolutely a great idea.
How much incentives are you willing to give?
Well, well, that's from the conversation with the water company. That's a good conversation with them because what's gonna happen? You're absolutely right. That's gonna go on the homeowner to pay that. No, we can't have that. And then at the end of the day, let's say they don't want to pay out of their pocket to that. Then that could potentially later down the road be, you know, an eminent domain situation, and we can't have that. So, one of the solutions I was thinking of for some of my rural citizens out there is if a developer wants to come in and they want to develop these houses in the RMP, right? First off, I'm a huge advocate for following Title 30 when you're in the RMPs.
Explain RMP.
Oh, sorry. It's a rural neighborhood preservation. So, a lot of these people in the RMP, you know, they're on 2.5 acres, five acres. Some of them have horses, chickens, you name it, right? So, when a developer comes in, they gotta have, they have to have a buffer. That's in Title 30, 10,000 square foot lot to buffer the RMP, right? And then you can kind of play around from there depending on which project it is. So, if a developer wants to come in, for me, they gotta meet all those standards. Now, you're gonna have the lines. You need to help hook my existing residents up to this so they don't have a burden of paying X amount of dollars, which you discussed, to hook up to that. That, to me, that's another solution. And then that would be, could be a good solution, a win-win for everybody.
How do you feel about the name change?
Of the...
Of our airport?
Airport? Another example of the board and certain county commissioners not listening to their constituents. I think you probably saw the line of people there to speak about it, and some were for the name change. Obviously, a lot of people weren't for the name change. I understand. They say that it was privately funded. But couldn't we use that money?
They were trying to say the same thing about Allegiant.
Right. But couldn't we use that money for something else?
Yeah, and my, my whole thing about the name change is, like, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't care who the airport is named after. I mean, literally, how much money did that cost?
Sinage.
To go through all that? Like, is it really that important? All I want to know is, will the runway hold the plane when I take off or land?
Yeah, and I think there was a unique opportunity to unite us, Las Vegas International Airport.
You said it's privately funded.
That's what they say.
With a period. Stop.
That's what they said.
But did they say where the money came from? Would you be interested in doing a forensic audit on every single department within the Clark County Commission?
Yeah, absolutely, because I think we need more transparency. Because I think a lot of people, even now, were having this conversation about the airport, right? And, you know, is it privately funded? That's what I've heard. Yeah, absolutely. I think that needs to be done, and I think that that's something that we deserve to know. You know, everybody deserves to know that. Even me is a future elected official, absolutely, so.
All right. So, now I'm gonna ask, and Steve knows where I'm going on this. A forensic audit is super expensive.
Okay.
Where does the money come from, and how do we decide what firm does the forensic audit?
That's a great question. So, that's something for me. I want to go in there. How much does it cost? Let's take a look. Is there an agency outside that does it? Those are kind of some of those questions that I need to kind of be in that seat first so I can figure out who these third-party agencies are, who does it, how much it's gonna cost.
And how much would you save that would balance the cost anyways? Because if you're gonna save millions of dollars if you do the forensic audit, and the forensic audit only costs $40,000, you're already saving money anyway.
Right, and I think that's one of those things. You gotta go in and look, hey, how much is this gonna cost? How much money could I potentially be saving? Is it gonna outweigh, you know, the benefits and everything for the taxpayers? Yeah, but, you know, I also think too, even something free, right, that doesn't cost us money, is when I'm there and I'm sitting in that chair, asking these questions, right? That's free, and that's something that I can do on the board, right? I do a great job already on the Planning Commission, asking questions of these developers, like, oh, hey, did you do this? And what about this? You know? So, I think that's something that as an elected official, that that's our job. That's our responsibility to ask these questions.
Do you know the budget of the county?
Right now, I would have to double-check because I know that they just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, too. To be honest, I'd have to double-check.
Do you know what the county pays out?
For which department?
Together.
Well, I know it's the opposite. They're paying out more right now. Yeah, you know, we've got a lot of going out.
Would you be willing to lobby the federal government to get marijuana as federally, federally recognized so dispensaries could start putting the money in banks instead of... Instead of under their pillow and in their walls like Breaking Bad?
That would be, I would definitely like to look into that and see because I I think there's a lot of opportunity there. But I would like to look into that and and see what we can kind of do with with some of that money and and see if. You know, would we get a piece of that pie? How much of that pie would we get? Stuff like that. But I think that's definitely worth. I think that there's a lot of other states looking into that as well too.
So as county commissioner, what board would you like to sit on and why?
Yeah, the water board.
Why is that?
Yeah, cuz I think that that's a very big issue and I know that with my background in land use and zoning, there's. There's a lot going on, you know, with, we need development, but how can we ensure that we have this water to continue this development? And is there water waste happening on the construction level that we could work with, you know, with? For example, the meters on the fire hydrant. I think there's a lot to be done there and I think there could be a little bit more transparency too with um. You know, the water waste and exactly how much, you know, the water is going back into the reclamation for the recycling.
So we had a, so sorry, sorry, Jim, we had a gubernatorial candidate on last week and. He was telling us that um the water that we use from the Colorado goes to Mexico.
Okay.
Do you know anything about that?
I do not know about that.
I know it goes to California unless he was thinking California is part of Mexico.
Did, well, I'm not sure about that. That was my.
I thought that was very unusual.
Yes, I'm not, maybe he knows something or that person knows something.
Okay, so I'll I'll clarify a little bit. I did some research on this. Um as far as our water going to Mexico, we. I think what he meant was that the Colorado River eventually ends up across the border. Um but from what uh the research I did, basically, the water is between. Arizona, California, Nevada, and some goes to Utah.
I didn't hear Mexico.
Yeah, no, I I haven't heard. I think he was, I think he was confused on the fact that the Colorado River went into Utah. Or I mean, Mexico, sorry.
So is the Las Vegas Valley Water the only um board you like to sit on?
So that's just one board. The other board is the Visitor Authority, so.
Oh, yeah, now you hit my wheelhouse. Go ahead.
Good.
Cuz I I have no idea why. Uh so much money gets diverted to them. To promote Las Vegas.
Yeah.
I mean, uh people don't realize that. Car registration, when you uh register your car or in your case, a truck every year. And and the Jeep, I mean. It we, it it shouldn't cost as much as it does, but most of your registration taxes actually go. To the convention authority.
Right, and I think there's really creative ways. I mean, they're doing it, they're doing a good job, right? Yeah, the money thing, we we need to figure that out as well too. Um but you know, I've, obviously, I work on the strip, I've worked on the strip my, you know, my whole time here in Las Vegas and I think that that's very important. That is where we do earn, you know, our our money for the county. That is one way we earn it. But I also think there is something to say, that is our little jewel right there and, you know, it has to be protected. But we also have to make sure that we're bringing in the tourism and we're constantly, you know, um going out there and lobbying for different types of conventions to come here. Let's make it easier for them to come here. Let's not make it harder, right, with some of these restrictions and. And then that also ties into, you know, public safety, right? And making sure that, you know, Metro's doing a phenomenal, they're doing the best that they can out there on the strip. But also just ensuring that we're always keeping the strip safe and enticing tourism to come because everybody wins, right? I win personally when, you know, I go to work, the workers win, we win as, you know, the county wins, everybody wins, so.
So those are the only two boards?
Those are my top two boards. I think for me, um that I really, that's something I I really think that I can bring a lot to a table. But obviously, I'm gonna be happy cuz I know, I know how it works when you're the newbie, they kind of put you on, you know. Maybe the airport board, yeah, you know, but for me, those are some standout.
I thought you would say fiscal affairs.
For me?
That way you hold Metro's purse strings.
Well, I mean, like I said, I would be honored to serve on any board, but for me, those are really kind of, you know, what I've been. Kind of dealing with for the last couple of years.
So basically, you're you're smart enough to understand, like, you don't want to sit on, because I know um. People that wanna sit on every board. But then, like, if you, if you stretch yourself too thin, then you're not really doing a good job.
Well, and I also think, you know, being a newbie, I know how missionaries can work. They're gonna, you know, especially if they're up for, you know, maybe reelection, some of them that have been there, you know, maybe get the good boards, but.
Yeah, so how are you gonna, how are you gonna deal with that? Because. I it's not, and I'm not picking on the county commission. It it happens at city council level.
Don't pick on thick sugar bomb.
Well, you got about four hours. Oh, I can pick on his ass, let me tell you. But anyway. But um but yeah, it 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 happens on, you know, county commission level and, you know, it happens on the. City council level, it, you know, it happens in the legislature, it it happens everywhere. But how are you gonna deal with um, like you said, being a newbie and. Cuz that's one thing that uh I have heard from a lot of people when they do get elected, like, I had no idea. And they they basically bowl you. So so how are you gonna stand up to that?
Yeah, of course. Well, I can tell you.
Because you're gonna, you're you're gonna have to, because there are some strong people on that board.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can tell you, and the thing is, is and if a candidate says that they know exactly what they're getting into when they're running for a certain office. And no, you you don't ever know what you're getting into until you're there, right? So first off, yeah, you're absolutely right. Second of all, you've got to work with the rest of the county commissioners, right? I see some people out there, you know. Saying some things, but I'm like, well, what if you win, you're gonna have to work with these other county commissioners that aren't up for election, right? There's only three county commissioners up for election. So for me, I already understand that. I was a newbie on the planning commission, right? So for me, you just go in there, put your head down, do the work that you need to do. Show them that you can do the work and that you really did earn that spot on there and you have to work together. All the times me and the other planning commissioners don't see eye to eye. You probably don't watch planning commission all the time, right? It's not the most exciting board meeting to watch. But I get outvoted and I get outvoted a lot. But you know what? They know.
Now we're gonna have to tune in now.
You're gonna tune in. I'm consistent and that, at the end of the day, somebody can respect. I may continue to get outvoted, but I don't back down. It's, you know, you just gotta stick to what you know. And at the end of the day, they're like, I respect you, but I had to vote this way. I get it, it's business. So for me, it's just putting your head down, working hard and letting them know that you did earn that seat and then also doing your constituents the right way, making sure you're serving them.
Which is interesting that people don't pay more and I'm I'm. I don't either, but uh one of the things that I have heard that like. People need to start paying more attention because. It's so interesting every once in a while cuz I'm kind of a political dork now that Steve's got me in all the zoning stuff and. Like, he's taught me to pay attention to local things that actually matter before I just cared about the president, you know, that stuff.
President Obama's his favorite.
Favorite president ever. But uh no, it was interesting because sometimes when I will watch. Channel two and something comes in front of, and I watch city council a lot because that's the one that uh. I typically have to deal with the most is, okay, so the planning commission suggests approval. And pretty much ninety percent of the time, unless it's something really nuts. It passes.
Well, yes, until I got there. Now we have a little bit more conversations, there's a little bit more, uh, you know, denials that get thrown around.
So that's.
A lot of failed motions, right?
So that's, so that's the current planning commission that you're on?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So but before then, you're right. Yeah, yeah.
Before we go, I wanna leave you with this. Public comments. When citizens don't get heard, they get very angry. So what are you gonna do about to make sure that everybody and anybody, no matter what kind of wackadoo stuff they wanna talk about? Get there two to three minutes?
Yeah, absolutely. Successibility and it's the.
Without shutting their mics off?
Yes. It doesn't matter how long that line is for public comment, we're not shutting the line down.
Even if you have a basketball game to go to.
What basketball game? What's more important than this? What's more important than what I signed up to do? Right now, I'm a volunteer. I, in my six years, I have sat through hours and hours of public comment. I chaired the last enterprise land use two nights from six PM, I think, until midnight, both nights. I, we didn't leave until every single person got to be heard for their three minutes on the land use. It is vital. It is the most important part.
Very good.
And I'm there to sit for hundreds more hours.
Jim, do you have anything else from us? Walter. Other than, thank you very much for coming on and and thank you for taking on that uh. You know, uh running for county commission. I think more people need to start paying attention to. Uh and Steve knows this and I've said it that over and over and over again. City council, county commission, like those are things that people do not pay attention. Right, yeah.
We didn't even get to talk about potholes.
Potholes are just this big holes that mess up your tires.
Yeah, but I mean, those those things are super important and a lot of people don't pay attention to it. They like to complain about what happens, but they they don't pay attention to it.
So Ms. Walto, did did, is there something you like to cover that we haven't addressed?
No, I think we've covered a lot. I think for me, a lot of the major issues we talked about. For me, my always, the one promise I can always stand behind is accessibility. I've been accessible for the last six years. Nothing has changed and nothing will change.
So you're gonna have an open door policy?
Always has been. Everybody, so my cell phone number is all over the place.
So Ms. Walto, could you look into the camera and Mark's gonna zoom in on you and you tell folks why they need to get you out of that primary? And put you in the general election and your point of contact, please?
Perfect. My point of contact, you can reach me on all my social medias and my website is Jenna Walto for County Commission. And you gotta get me out of this primary because I've been here, I've been in the game already for six years, I've been an advocate for my neighborhoods. I wanna see responsible development for District F, create new jobs, diversify the job market. And have safe neighborhoods with a great partnership of Metro. So vote Jenna Walto in the primary coming up for District F.
Thank you, Jenna. Uh Jim, thank you. Folks, that's uh Jenner Jenna Walto. She is a candidate for Clark County Commission District F. If you don't live in District F, call somebody up and say, hey, listen to that Jenna Walto, she's got some good things she wants to tell you. And make sure they that, make sure that they vote. An educated voter is the best voter. This is Steve Sansa, Jim Jones for Veterans in Politics. Until next time.